Career development, a number of questions came up about career development resources. And Mrs. Peterson is here to give us just a very brief update on some of the questions that came up last month. Thank you.
Are you highlighting brief?
I was.
Good evening. We did go back at trustee Mosip's request and speak to the counselors regarding U-Scienc and Career Cruising, which is now called Zello. So I'm going to call it Zello from now on because I think there's some concern that there's three things we're talking about.
Sure.
And in August of 2018, we discussed this with the counselors. We looked at both platforms, and the counselors were not ready to make a move. So at trustee Mosip's request, we went back. I went back to the counselors. And the high school with the adoption and implementation of the academies at all three of our high schools, they are all now using U-Scienc with the academy lead teacher, and they are happy to not add Zello to their plate. However, the middle school counselors unanimously stated that they would like to continue to use Zello with the new MDE requirements for career exploration. There are some modules and lessons in there that the students can partake in. It's a new and improved Zello. The difference between Zello and U-Scienc really is, U-Scienc has aptitude and interests training or testing for the students, so the students can identify things they're interested in, but it'll also tell them what their best fit is and give them options and tell them what colleges across the country and what the job outlook is for that, where Career Cruising in the past was just interests. So, you know, if you're interested in being an athletic superstar, then you could, that would be what you would learn about. So, middle school's going to stick with Zello for another year, and U-Scienc is going to be what the high school uses. The high school will also have to continue to do their educational development plan and hard copy until they design an electronic portfolio with Mahara that we can take from grade to grade to grade.
Yes, trustee Thorpe.
I went to a session at the school board conference this weekend talking about the educational plans. One that they also brought up besides Zello was Naviance. Do you know if that was one that the district looked at?
A year ago, yes.
Okay, all right. In my house this past couple of weeks, my seventh grader took his first of these tests, and he could be a mason or a pipe fitter. He could be an oncologist. But unfortunately, he's now focused on being an explosives expert.
Oh, geez.
Uh-oh.
So I hope we get this figured so it doesn't have to become explosives in the house.
So, and what Zello does do is it gives them what they're interested in and shows them a variety, so they don't just go straight to any, something that requires a bachelor's or beyond.
Eight years of college.
Yeah, it gives them a little taste of everything. And the middle school counselors really didn't want students pigeonholed in middle school. They wanted to give them a taste of lots of things and then let the high school start focusing.
Yes, trustee Mosip.
Two questions. So, what are we doing? Are we renewing then the licenses for Zello for only middle schoolers?
Yes.
And that is how many do you have roughly?
It's under $7,000. It's, yeah. I actually attached a-
We will be seeing it again because we voted down, so it's going to have to be on the agenda.
Well, it might not be because it's under-
Oh, well, if it's under, yeah.
Yeah, it's under, so I attached it to the board request items. There's a whole bunch of information in there for you with that amount.
Okay. So, would this still satisfy the requirement from the state, though?
Yes.
So, and you said the high schoolers would be doing hard copy until we get something?
Well, they've been doing a hard copy educational development plan, and actually, they looked at that last year. And there's pros and cons to it being online and the counselor actually having the hard copy and reviewing it before the student comes to see them. So it's actually just preference.
Mrs. Peterson, can I suggest something?
Sure.
I hope that, and I can help you and help Dr. Milico reach out to the University of Michigan in Dearborn, to the computer science department. They can actually, they do have something called Senior Design, where they spend a full year designing an application or something that helps other entities, and they do it for free. Now, these are college students, so you're not going to get the best of the best solutions, but they can wow you with things. So I suggest that we actually, and this is the right time for it, because in November, in December, that's when they start thinking about these ideas, that you shoot this idea to them, telling them, "We've been doing this hard copy. Can you let us know how we can digitize this and have this as a solution that is being used in the district?"
There actually is a way to digitize it. The question is not whether we can, it's whether or not, it's what's best with the counselors. The counselors having that, there's just a two-school of thoughts. So, there was a committee that looked at it. I was not a part of that, but some of them really believe in having to actually take that hard copy, look online, see what the students have done, write down their grades to really get to know the students.
Absolutely.
So, so it wasn't a matter of if we can't. We do have the ability through Mahara to do it. It's a matter of if that's what really is going to be best practice to allow them to learn their students.
Sure. The only thing that I worry about is that we want to be able to collect data on how many students are doing career exploration, especially in high school. We want to know how many students have checked out other colleges and universities. And it actually makes the counselor's job, I know they're very overloaded. Unfortunately alone, I think we only have, what, five counselors, and we have 28,000, 2,800 students. So, this, if these students from U of M in Dearborn volunteer their time and they work with these counselors to come up with a software that we could be a model for, that would be something great. And if we already have a process that we're already following, I hope that we, while we are still doing the hard copy paperwork, that we're still doing the same on there. Because in healthcare, everybody moved to EMR, and that's how things, they want to be very efficient. And I think it's very important that we do the same and we move to getting everything on record. And it's so easy to lose track.
You want to have some kind of way to track-
Absolutely.
-is what you're saying, that that's easily followed. I think that can be a future report that we can do. We don't have to go into it right now.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, we had a number of students and parents who had questions about a gymnastics program. So we have athletic directors, Robert Picano and Jeffrey Conway, who will come up and will briefly describe to us, you know, the status of the gymnastics program in response to some of the questions and concerns expressed from some of our community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've got a brief overview of the Unified Gymnastics Program that we supported up until this past season for the Dearborn schools. What we have is, the first slide here is, over the last seven years, is our total number of participants that successfully completed the season. And as you notice, it has gone down pretty much every year. And last year, we ended the season with seven girls, three of which were seniors, so we had only four girls returning for the sport. The numbers have been declining. We have been working on trying to get numbers up with the publications in the school and getting the word out, but the numbers just have been continuing to decrease.
One of the issues we've run into, too, is we haven't even had enough athletes to-
Can you step in front of the microphone?
I've got to roll there, too.
Thank you.
One of the issues that we run into, too, is we actually don't have enough athletes now to even compete at competition. So when you get into state tournaments and regional level competition, you know, we would essentially have no team score because we didn't have enough athletes on our team to compete.
There's a requirement of a certain number.
Yeah, it would be, you know, playing football with seven players or two people in basketball. We're underneath that number that we would even need to have a team score. So it's really been dropping down, as you can see, in the last, in the last five, six, seven years here.
And this next slide was just ways that we promoted the information for the student athletes, information for tryouts, as well as when the meetings were, we're posting the bulletin, both the social media sites, once we created them. We posted signs in the building. During freshman orientation, it was publicized that we had a team. This is when the start date is. Whenever we had middle school orientations, we would also get that information out. We also had, during the school time, coaches or the parents would come on in to drum up some of the interest. In the summer mailings, we would have when the sport is offered in the winter, as well as who the coach was for any further information that they may need. We had preseason meetings and also telling the kids through positive peer pressure to go out and get more kids to be a part of the team. One of the things we definitely want you to know is that there's absolutely no title nine ramifications in regards to gymnastics not being sponsored in the Dearborn Public Schools. The slide here has what we have here. Over at Dearborn High, they have added boys and girls freshman soccer, boys and girls bowling, as well as this year, Competitive Cheer. And at Edsley Ford, we've added boys and girls bowling, as well as Competitive Cheer. Also, you have there the number of offerings that each school has with the total number of teams for both boys and girls. So, if you, when we look at that, we actually have more teams and more offerings for the girls versus the boys. And here we have just what the, some of the costs have been for, to run the sport. And the sport is housed over at Stout. It is off campus for both schools. We're anywhere between 17,000 to 23,000 dollars a year on the sport. And so some of these are averages and some of these are some fixed costs. And when we decided this, we took some factors involved. Definitely one was the declining number of participants each year. Also statewide, there's only 49 total teams that have gymnastics, and some of them are co-op or unified. Some of those are standalone teams. We were unable to compete the last two years specifically as a team due to low numbers or not competing as a whole team. This year, because of the combined unified numbers, we were up over 3,500, and we would have eventually either been forced to split by the state rules or find a different way to co-op with other programs to get under 3,500. One of the things also is that where we're at here in Dearborn, I looked at the 20-mile radius from where we're at, about other schools that have gymnastics and possibly competing against. Schools within 20-mile radius were the Plymouth-Canton schools, Leboni-Churchill, Leboni-Stevenson, and Birmingham-Groves. Only one of those teams is in our league, and that's Birmingham-Groves. Our league itself, with the gymnastics team we'd compete against, consisted of Birmingham-Groves, Frazier, Gross Point, Port Huron, and Bloomfield-Hills. So there's no teams close.
I was going to say, Port Huron.
Port Huron, yes. They were the newest member last year. When I first started 13 years ago, Trenton was in the league. They have dissolved the team as well. So there's no teams in the area that we can compete against as well. Any questions?
Trustee Barry.
Just want to make sure, we're not saying that there's a cost to this, 17,000 to 23,000, that was the reason.
No, that's not the reason.
Just want to make sure, I want to clarify.
No, it was numbers.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But obviously, the chart you showed, you know, I've spoken to some parents and I've spoken to Director Mashur, the number's been declining.
Yes.
So the quote-unquote accusation that the district didn't do anything or to promote the program, obviously, everything that you tried, you did.
Correct.
It's just a sport that's going, yeah, it is what it is. What are, okay, moving forward, what do we, what do we have at the high school levels that we can offer these young ladies? Well, I mean, is there like a, is it like a club, like at the college? I know it's something, if we don't have a varsity sport, we call it a club and, you know, they can compete.
That's a possibility of looking at as a club, but as, you know, going forward in the future, if that's what the district would like to do. It's a possibility.
Is that, is that what that, is it same cost? Is there, would there be a head coach and 29 yards? Something can be, you know, parent-run?
It would be what we come up with as a district.
Have we had these discussions with some of these parents that are reaching out to us?
I have not, no.
You have not, okay.
Typically, when something's offered as a club sport, it would be more or less run by an outside, outside-the-school coach, outside-the-school group, and we would just kind of recognize them at the end of their season with, you know, a club varsity letter or something like that. So they're pseudo-part of the athletic program, but we're not hiring the coach, you know, we're not making the schedule, we're not providing any transportation.
But do we provide the equipment and the space still?
No.
No? So they would have to find their own-
They would be self-sufficient themselves.
Okay. So it's not really sponsored to that school, yeah.
It's similar to what the basketball teams do and the Dearborn youth football we do. We raise money, it's a parent organization.
Right, yeah. Some of the soccer teams, yeah, okay.
Do we know if there are those around here in the, what would be the closest one, for example, for gymnastics? I mean, there's a wealth of basketball and football and others, but do we know what's closest as far as gymnastics? Do you know?
Gymnastics, they have their own, like, gyms that they train out and things like that. So, that's, I think, something that we're looking at differently. We're looking at this being a sponsored varsity sport that would compete at the state level. Most of the gymnastics houses have their own competitions on salaries and things like that. So, I think we're looking at two different things here.
But are those available, how much are those available in the community? Do you know?
I'm going to jump in here. So, Mr. Mashur has confirmed that we will be making it a club sport. And what a club sport means, that they'll be honored at the banquet like all our other athletes. They'll also get a varsity letter. But the service is, what we do with figure skating would be another good example. And to answer somebody's question about where is it offered, my daughter's a gymnast, and Mills Gymnastics is the largest one. It's about right down Pelham and north to North Line, not too far. There's also Sokol, S-O-K-O-L, which is on-
Joy World.
-Warren and Telegraph, or that area, Dearborn Heights.
Warren, yeah, it is Warren.
Those are the two that I found through looking up, looking into it as a parent. But this is the same, same thing that we do with figure skating as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, is that something we probably should monitor? And if, you know, if the club builds up to 12, 15, 16 girls, then maybe we can revisit it as at the district's law. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
President, I have one question quickly. What's the minimum number of students that we would say, "This is alarming, the number's going down." What would be the satisfactory number that you would say, "Yeah, we still can carry the program with this number"?
What's viable?
What was that?
What was viable, a viable number of students?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
With gymnastics, I believe that number's five, to compete and score as a team.
Right. But we had the last year, 14 students?
Last year was seven.
Seven?
Yes.
Okay. So if they were to become as a club, do we offer them space free of charge then as we become a partner of this program or no?
That would be what we decide. Right now, it was done at Stout.
I'll jump in and help.
Sure.
So if we offer the space, then it's no longer a club sport. Club sport means that they're participating in the sport.
Right. Do we make a special case since this is, can we make a special case as a board?
That would be up to you, yeah, absolutely.
That would be, trustee Mosip, that would be a very dangerous direction.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just asking the question.
That would be the first one to jump on that, because I pay thousands and thousands of dollars to use our field. So I'm just giving you-
Right.
Absolutely.
They would be having to pay like any other group.
Yeah, why don't you make that exception, yeah.
I understand.
Not for free.
You mentioned social media was kind of advertised. Was that on the district's social media or on other channels?
That was back when we started our EFHS Twitter account, same with DHS, that, "Hey, the meeting's this date." You know, that was just an avenue to get the word out.
So it was on the schools' individual social media accounts, not on the Dearborn schools' social media?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Choco has one more non-agenda item.
So we hear, we hear questions, we hear concerns from our parents. Recently, a couple of concerns were expressed that we heard from parents at Hague due to capacity issues. We have a lot of students who attend Hague School, and we've invited Principal Short here to address the board for just a few minutes on some of the enrollment questions that have come up from Hague. So, Mr. Short, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Evening, board. How you guys doing?
Good.
Just a little bit of history on Hague School. This is my fifth year at the building there. And when I started there, it was about 460 to 470 students. Over the last four to five years, we're up to 530 students now. We started with about 19 instructional teachers four to five years ago, and now we're up to 23 teachers at the building. So basically, each year we've added on a teacher from the districts provided us with. We've seen a lot of growth in our lower grades, especially kindergarten, first grade. We currently have at our building a young fives classroom, three kindergarten, and a K-1 split as well. And the various other grade levels are all about four teachers per grade level. With that expansion, we've had to kind of get creative with the building. As we've grown, we've had to utilize the different classrooms. And we had a technology classroom that we had, that had to go onto a card, unfortunately. And then recently, in the school year, we started with three third-grade classrooms that all had 30 students in there. Working with our district office, we were able to get a fourth teacher for a third grade and get those class sizes down to 23, which is definitely ideal for academics, the small groups and one-on-one. The classroom that we did need to use for that, though, was our music classroom. That's where we're at, kind of with everything, with the room at the building. So we did have to put music onto a card as well over, for at Hague. Overall, I'm sorry, I'm just gathering my thoughts here.
That's okay.
Overall, you know, overall at the building, excuse me, I guess, I'm sorry. I get emotion about it, too.
No, it's okay. I understand.
And we know with increasing enrollment and adding staff, there are a lot of additional elements that are involved.
Right.
And when you're looking for space, you're making very difficult decisions.
Yeah, so we've had to, we've had to get creative with the library.
It's a burden on the building.
Right. So we've had to get pretty creative with the building over there. You know, we have our two music classes that push in. We have two gym classes at the building that have that together. The staff has been amazing, working together with one another. You know, we have a very involved community that's here tonight, showing their support for our building, because we do want what's best for our students. We were very excited at the idea of the bond passing, and we were sad about that it didn't happen. Within our cafeteria, if, you know, if people are able to join us for our lunches, we have about, you know, close to 200 students eating in the cafeteria. That is pretty small overall. I know, it's about the same size as Howard Elementary Schools, and they have about 100 students less than we do. That was one of the things with the bond that was going to be-
Expanded.
-expanded, two to three times larger. The idea with that, too, is that that could have been used for a multipurpose room, to have another gym class in, to have our fifth grade promotion in, just various other, you know, inside recess during the cold temperatures that we saw some of today. We are also looking at adding anywhere from four classrooms or more to the building to help out with some of those specials or to help out with future expansion and growth and population. Again, with the bond not passing, we're kind of going back to, you know, the drawing board here. So that, again, we were looking for a bigger cafeteria. We were looking for rooms for our classrooms. We're planning for expansion with our population with the bond. Also, we are looking at repurposing our locker rooms. We do have locker rooms that date back pretty far. I'd say those probably date back to the 60s or 70s.
I was going to say, they're about the 60s.
Yeah.
I've been in the building quite often.
Yeah. And so we're looking at better use of space. So those could become an office for a nurse. That could have been a workroom for the staff. Currently, you know, the, our staff lounge has copiers and stuff in it as well. So we'd like to provide in the future a bigger area for the teachers at the building to eat their lunch when there's not work being done within there. Another thing that could have been done with, if the bond would have passed. So overall, we have gotten very big over the last five years at the building. We've gotten creative with our use of space. We were looking forward to the bond passing. So, you know, next year, I'm already, I'm trying to be as creative as I can. So, you know, next year, I'll come up with some different ideas as well. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how many rooms are, is the preschool using?
So the preschool just uses one room at the building.
One. So that's, that's not a solution. And I don't know, I mean, one thing that we, I hate to say the word boundaries, it puts so many people into, I don't know whether there are any fixes that are, any other fixes that are possible for, for that, because, yeah, everything's going to have to be creative solutions now. Trustee Thorpe.
Mr. Short, I think you already answered one of the questions that I was going to have, which is, we've just heard about this recently, about the problems in losing the music class.
Right.
So it sounds like you had more students than you wanted in each of the third-grade classes, and to alleviate those numbers, you had to turn the music room into a fourth class.
Correct.
Fourth or third, did you say?
Fourth.
Fourth or third, fourth, third?
Yeah, we're pretty much at four classes per grade level now.
So the parents wouldn't have been happy probably when you were having 30 students in each of the classes. So they're probably happier with the numbers, but now we've lost that.
Right.
Now, one thing we have done in the district is we don't offer preschool or young fives in all of the buildings. I don't know if a solution would be to move those to another building, because that's not based on boundaries, right?
The preschool is not, although generally speaking, when you have a preschool, the community, the neighborhood uses it first. But not every, every elementary school offers a preschool program.
Preschool is income-based, though, right?
That one is. That one is not a, yeah. That one is a paid tuition.
Paid, yeah.
Yeah.
So in looking at, typically in the past, obviously, when we look at enrollment projections, we start a school year and we try to ensure that everyone has a place and a spot and is comfortable for the year. And when something like this happens, we're happy that a teacher was added, but not as pleased with the fact that perhaps music was displaced. So I know that where this has happened before, the staff gets together and develops a plan for what would be the optimum use of the building pending projections, you know, for the following year, and then works with parent groups to say, "This is what the plan would be for the upcoming year." So what that would involve, you know, we'll see.
Dr. Mead.
I went to the presentation for the bond issue at your school.
Yes, thank you.
And it's really out of date. It's really horribly out of date. And let me just ask you, how many bathrooms are off of that cafeteria for 200 kids?
There's, there's one stall off of the cafeteria, but then there's the locker room as well. So we had to kind of balance between the two. There was, again, going to the bond, we were going to repurpose part of those locker rooms to have group stalls that the students could go and use, because that is a problem at the building.
See, the board, the board's doing.
Wow. The unfortunate thing is, is that we, you know, this did not pass, and I don't know what the numbers looked like at your particular school with the vote as well. I'm confused as to whether the parents understood that they were potentially voting down a solution to their capacity issues at that particular building or not. I don't know what, what the precinct-by-precinct numbers looked like. But at this point in time, we're, our hands are going to be kind of tied financially. We had already purchased the property in anticipation of being able to expand, and I'm not saying that we won't be able to look forward, hopefully in the near future, to come up with a solution for resources and funding for that. We have every intention of doing it. We know the school has a capacity issue, but right now, we're, we're a little bit leery of spending. We have, have a state requirement that we have to keep a certain amount of money in our rainy day fund or our savings account, or the state will take over the board. So we can't touch what we have. We finally built it up to reflect the 5% that the state requires us to have. And that's for emergency purposes, basically, of any issues. We can't just go into it and use it to do these additions like one would hope at this point in time. So now we have to look down the road as to what other opportunities we might have. And maybe Hague might be one of the buildings that we have to find something sooner rather than later on waiting for a bond solution, potentially moving into the year 2021, because that's the next time we'll have that money. Now that it failed in this election cycle, no matter what we do next year, we won't have that money until the following year, quite frankly. And that's what happens when we put, this bond failed. So that being said, we're going to have to come up with some alternatives, hopefully, that will find a way to help resolve some of those. But we also have other buildings that also have very serious needs, Lori, one of them. And, you know, everybody's looking for us to find a way to finance them, but we don't have the money to do it. So this, this failure of the bond has grave implications, and it's got a domino effect. And unfortunately, we can't resolve it in the next few months. It's just not going to happen. There's too many regulations, too many strings that we can't pull anymore. So, I thank you. I feel your pain. I understand that it's a- I understand that it's a, I was in a school, uh, my children went to, uh, Oakman Elementary School where everything was on a cart for a while, and we had trailers outside, and that's when we passed the hundred and fifty million dollar bond many years ago. It's been twenty years since a bond has failed in this district, and, uh, it's unfortunate that, uh, it came at this time when we have real needs that we were going to be able to attend to. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Short.
Trustee Moses. Oh, trustee Moses.
Um, Mr. Short, thank you so much, uh, for coming out today. Um, hearing what the other trustees, um, mentioned, and obviously knowing that the bond failed, what would you expect our board to help you alleviate this problem in the short term? What would you, obviously you've had some time to think about, and if you didn't.
Anybody that knows me knows I'm, I'm big on collaboration.
Sure.
So continuing to work together, uh, we've done in that over the last three or four years with getting another teacher on board at the building, uh, looking at the concerns that we do have from our, our community that's here today, and seeing how we can work together, you know, to move forward in the future, um, because we're not, we're not sure.
What would be a short-term solution to alleviate the crowded sort?
I mean, that's, I think that's more of a, of a district decision on that.
We're not going back there.
We need more, we need more classrooms at the building, um, but.
Cafeteria needs to be larger.
Yeah, I mean, the, the initial things, in addition to the cafeteria and adding, you know, some classrooms to the building, would be the most ideal for, for the building.
Oh, thank you very much, I know it's stressful to have so many students in your school, so I, I went to Fortson High School before the addition, and even until today, Fortson is still very crowded, and I can't imagine how is it for your school. So, uh, thank you for putting the extra effort.
Maybe Mr. Short remembers the, uh, cost for the addition that the bond would have funded, what was that total, if you recall?
The amount that was allotted to our building.
Yeah, or maybe Mr. Wall remembers it.
Eight, eight point three million, just to our.
Uh, yeah, that, that's not something we can take out of our general fund, and we cannot take that out of our fund balance.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Short. A couple of other, um, quick things, uh, the Wayne County has offered us sixteen additional slots for, uh, the Great Start to Readiness preschool program.
Oh, good.
And so there will be our plans to place this classroom at Salina Elementary, where there is a licensed, uh, classroom opening, so that would allow more students to be served. Um, one of our Snow Elementary students, congratulations to that family, was selected to light the torch for the United Way Foundation at the city, so that was a very exciting opportunity for this young student and her family, so we were happy to, to witness her success there. And lastly, the Dearborn Public Library is a partner in the Dearborn Big Read, and is, um, partner, the district is partnering with the library, um, with the grant, uh, on The World is Your Lab, and the, uh, book selection is called Lab Girl by Hope Derrin. So stay tuned for a number of different events leading up to that, but the whole community will be involved in that come March and April, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, acknowledgement of donations.
So Mrs. Peterson will join us for the acknowledgement of donations, thank you.
Well, the good or the bad news is, is the last time I did this, there was like thirty-five, so there's only eight. A donation of an engine has been offered to Etzelford High School by James Sheridan to be used for lab exercises in the Autotech class. A donation of five thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents has been offered to Etzelford High School by Westbourne Chrysler to be used for automotive parts that will be used for demonstration and visual aids during lab exercises. A donation of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents has been offered to Howe Montessori by Abe Heschin to be used for refrigerator washer and dryer that will be used in the life skills room as part of the student curriculum. A donation of a sofa, love seat, and side coffee tables has been offered to Howe Montessori by Detroit Furniture to be used in the life skills room as part of the student's curriculum. A donation of a stove has been offered to Howe Montessori by Mo's Appliances to be used in the daily living room as part of the student curriculum. A donation of a refrigerator, love seat, dining table, and chairs has been offered to Howe Montessori by Mr. Ali to be used in the daily living room as part of the student's curriculum. A donation of clothing, shoes, jackets, and school supplies has been offered to Howe Montessori by Project Dignity Outreach to be used in the life skills room as part of the student's curriculum. A donation of various school supplies has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Hannah Wagner to be distributed to teachers within the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Approval of minutes.
Real quick accommodations, real quick, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I know I mentioned earlier the Dearborn youth football, but, uh, after the rough week we had last week, end up at Wayne State, watching two of our Etzelford graduates from last year, they play for Michigan Tech, they were down at Wayne State, so it was, uh, Michael Bates and, uh, William Moreno, and, uh, Mr. Moreno scored two touchdowns. Uh, the great news is that, uh, also I ended up made out to Belleville to watch our cheerleaders, our little cheerleaders, and our JV cheerleaders won first place in the league.
Ah, wonderful.
They need to get some recognition, I mentioned their names.
I saw your posting.
Yeah. Uh, the cheerleaders were Adriana Caperton, attends Stout School, and these are girls that are like nine and ten years old.
Yeah, they looked awful.
Yeah, yeah, and they did an amazing job. Uh, Arya Dobry, uh, Gracie Ford from Smith, the rest of these girls are all from Smith. Uh, Jordan Hazimi, Maddie Hawkins, Scarlett Jeffries, Sophia Gonzalez, Sophia Colazo. Uh, their head coach was, is Jill Hazimi, Jill plays many roles in that organization. Thank you for everything you do, Jill. Also, assistant coach was Lori Jeffries, excited little girls, that was an amazing job they did. Thank you for that.
Great, congratulations to them. All right, the next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Executive session, closed expulsion October eleventh, twenty nineteen, Board Report nineteen dash fifty-three. Finance committee meeting October eleventh, twenty nineteen, Board Report nineteen dash fifty-four, and regular P twelve meeting October eleventh, twenty nineteen, Board Report nineteen dash fifty-five. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Are there any additions, corrections? Hearing none, uh, can I attach a unanimous roll? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? On it, unanimous roll will be attached. Next, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by seven ten PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board might not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible, the, uh, the school board present reserves the right to limit times.
And I, in the interest of, uh, time, today, I am going to limit it to the three minutes, that is our board policy. Last month, I did not do this, and we ended up staying here till eleven fifteen in the evening, and because of the weather, inclement weather outside, I don't want to have a repeat of that, I would like everybody to get home safely before, uh, the regular board meeting ends at ten o'clock, so I am going to ask you to respect the three minutes, and if you either need to speak really fast if you think you're long, or when I tell you that your three minutes is up, please, um, uh, wrap it up and be prepared to take a seat. I'm sorry I have to do that, but, um, because of the weather especially, I'm, I am gonna ask, because we have a lot of people here who don't necessarily live nearby, who are staff and would like to go home to come to work in the morning. Thank you.
First, uh, will be Zainah Hamid wishing to speak about overcrowding at Hague.
Good evening, my name is Zainah Hamid, and I'm, I'm the PTA president at Hague Elementary. I'm here today to talk about the loss of our music classroom. Our children's mu- music class has been reduced to singing on a carpet and following along to, following along to a monitor in their classroom. The piano has been stored away and the teachers have lost their prop hours as a result. There'll be no concerts this year, and our Hague Music Club troublemakers has been disbanded. All of this has been absolutely devastating to our children. Music is not the only classroom, class without a classroom to call their own, our technology teacher is without a classroom too, and instrumental is on the stage while gym class is in session. The overcrowding is a serious issue that we can no longer put on the back burner, it is a matter of safety at this point. This is impacting our children, the Hague community will no longer remain silent on this issue. Our building has both a young fives and a preschool classroom. We have teachers in our building that have been thrown from their classrooms. The small number of half-day preschool students can be relocated, the students and staff at Hague cannot. Your commitment li- lies with the Hague students and, and staff, not a program that may or may not, the students may or may not be part of our district in the future. We have staff members working out of places no bigger than a closet, gym classes being held in the hallways, two gym teachers due to a double class sizes. Our library space is decreasing in size with numerous staff working out of there, and the fifth grade hall entrance is being used for state testing and meetings. How is this okay? We, we are in violation of fire codes at the very least, we are putting the safety of our children at risk. Specials are an important part of an education. Our dedicated, hard-working teachers cannot afford to lose their prop, classroom prop hours to music class and technology. They spend their prep organizing, planning, and preparing an enriching learning curriculum for our children. We cannot take this valuable time from, from them. Our children also look forward to leaving their classrooms to attend music class, and they no longer have this to look forward to. I can go on and on about this. We as parents, as a PTA, and as a PTA, will do whatever is needed for our children in our school, we will not settle for anything less than what our children deserve, and we are asking the bare minimum. I personally discussed this situation with Dr. Maleko, and his response that he had no knowledge of this situation and would work on it. A few weeks later, Dr. Maleko was at Hague and was approached by a group of parents and, and, um, and asked, and they confronted him about the music program. He then gave the same response, that he had no knowledge of the situation. I approached him and I told him, do you remember me and our conversation? He told me he did, and that for me to send him an email. I asked him, how about moving the preschool from our school and moving it to another school, such as Lindberg, who has few open schools.
I am gonna tell you that your time is going to be up, so if you wanna conclude.
Am I, am I three minutes, or can I continue?
Pardon? No, I, I, I'm going to keep everybody to the three minutes to be fair.
Okay, let me finish it. Dr. Maleko carries a student first signance and takes smiling selfies with our children. We, well, where is the students first in our situation? This can, this program can be easily relocated, relocated. We took this program from Howard when they could no longer accommodate it. Why is it the administrators are in or out of our building but can easily turn a blind eye? We are top performing school in our district, and as parents, we will not stand by and allow overcrowding issues to affect the quality of learning.
Thank you, Ms. Hamid.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, Carrie Bell Jones, also wishing to speak about Hague Elementary and the music room.
Hi, I have two kids that go to Hague and, um.
Can, can you stand in front of the, thank you.
Sorry. Um, my concern is that while right now they're making do with having their specials on a cart going class to class, like, how long is that going to be an acceptable solution to the problem? I mean, I appreciate that the staff has gotten creative and they're willing to make things work, but I don't think it's fair to the teachers to have to do that, and it's certainly not fair to the children. So while I know y'all can't just wave a magic wand and give them the money that they need to make the improvements to the building, I would just like to know, like, how long is this gonna go? Like, how long are we going to accept music on a cart? Because I don't think that's fair to the kids at all.
Thank you.
Next is Nicole Foley, wishing to speak regarding Hague and the preschool.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three, uh, boys at Hague Elementary, first grade, third grade, and fifth grade. I've been a resident of Dearborn my entire life, um, and when I found out that they were adding a third grade classroom, I was very happy, because I have a third grader and he was, uh, in one of the classrooms that I think had thirty-one children in it, so it was quite overwhelming, um, for his teacher and for their learning experience. When I found out, however, um, that we would be losing music instead of having the preschool moved to a different location, I found that to be very confusing. Um, I understand that one response was that these preschool parents were promised this particular location. Um, I have looked into it, and there's nothing that I can find, um, that contractually obligates the district to have preschool at Hague Elementary School. There are multiple other schools that have classroom capacity where the preschool could be moved, and if we can move the preschool and open up that classroom, then it gets music back into the classroom. Music is no longer on a cart. So I'm asking for, um, the board to consider moving the preschool to another elementary school where there is capacity. I know there's capacity at Lindberg, I know there's capacity at Duval. I understand it would be somewhat disruptive to these preschool families, however, your concern in my mind should be first and foremost to the students of Hague Elementary School, that they are part of the K twelve program, the preschool is not part of the K twelve program. Um, the other concern that I have, and it was addressed, um, by one of the other parents, is by virtue of the fact that we have both media on a cart and now music on a cart, is that the, the teachers, um, are not getting their minimum two hundred and seventy minutes of planning and prep time, that they are, um, the board is obligated to provide to them under their contract. The twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three contract requires that they get two hundred and seventy minutes of, to be completely relieved of duty, um, and so because music for K through kindergarten through third grade, all of those grades have two music classes, so right now, K through three, they're losing out on a hundred and thirty-five minutes of planning and prep time because they have media and two music classes in their classroom. And so I think to move the preschool out then gives them, if nothing else, it gives them back ninety minutes of prep time, and Mr. Short is working to try to alleviate the problem with having media on a cart by trying to make some rearrangements in the library. That would give back these teachers all two hundred and seventy minutes of prep time that they are entitled to under their contract.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Albert Abbas, representing Dearborn Parents for Better Schools, wishing to speak, speak about the bond.
Good evening, before you start my clock, I'd first like to thank, uh, all the parents from Hague for validating our concerns about overcapacity that we tried to address. Um, you can start the clock. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Dearborn Parents for Better Schools, I would like to start by thanking the school board for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. We have strong differences of opinion on the details of the BRICS bond proposal, but we all here share the sa- same common goal of supporting our teachers and students, and all strive to achieve excellence in our education system. Most of you worked hard and diligently on the issue, and it is understandable to be frustrated, however, the concerns of thousands of Dearborn voters who turned out in record numbers must be respected. The work must continue with the best interests of all stakeholders, students and families, citizens and educators. Voters defeated the bond proposal when it was apparent that it lacked transparency as well as not being fiscally sound. More importantly, it was not presented within the context of a sound, long-term vision for our schools. No one offered a convincing thirty-year plan for the schools. Thousands of Dearborn residents and voters have a genuine fear that we are caught in a never-ending cycle of debt with no one having the courage to do the right thing. And what is the right thing? It is the obligation to keep politics and self-serving interests out of classrooms, away from our administrators as well as our school board. It is essential to make decisions strictly on the basis of the true needs of the schools and students you were elected to represent and protect. It is your duty to act in good faith and to present the facts as they are, with the courage to make the tough decisions as pop, as unpopular as they may be. We, the residents who oppose the BRICS bond proposal, made it clear through the ballot boxes that we demand real solutions. We want to see a true effort to modernize our school buildings, coupled with long-lasting solution over the, for the overcrowding of our classrooms. This has to be achieved with fiscally responsible vision where we use the most cost-effective approach for short and long-term sustainability. All funding options must be entertained, and every effort exhausted to identify creative solutions for our needs without burdening the already overstretched taxpayer. Make no mistake about it, it is the board's responsibility to propose and act on such plans and solutions. If anyone on this board believes the voters should be the ones proposing the solutions, then you are deeply mistaken. Let it also be known that the residents and voters we represent will be watching and judging each and every one of you, if necessary, at the ballot box next November. Let's find common ground and a path forward. We, of course, willing to, we, of course, are willing to lend a helping hand. We are willing to be partners in this journey to achieve educational excellence, and as evidenced by Tuesday's results, we are willing to put the work in to achieve it. Indeed, we have already reached out to the superintendent to coordinate, but the onus is on you to deliver what the voters want.
Thank you, Mr. Abbas.
May God bless you for your sincere efforts, and bless our city and our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Nasser Alkahaly, wishing to speak about the bond. Next is Nasser Alkahaly wishing to speak about the bond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since I came to the U.S., I've been living in Dearborn. I never moved out of Dearborn. I have three kids going to Dearborn School. I have just some more questions. Why Dearborn Schools are continue to invest in the old buildings? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Hussein Debaja wishing to speak about mailers and the BRICS bond.
Before he starts, I'd like to give you this form of our statement so that it can be put on the...
Just hand it over. Yeah, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Respected body, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. While I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I felt compelled to offer rebuttal to President Pechikov's remarks. President Pechikov, you had mentioned that the schools did not have the funds to send out mailers besides the...
Not the school, that's two different things. We had a candidate committee that sent out...
Right, and I just want to show you, actually, I...
It's not the schools.
Right, I'm going to address it right now. The schools had enough money to send out multiple mailers, paid for by different public schools.
That's different than what I was talking about.
Yes, but this is paid for by different public schools. This was paid for by the private committee. I'm not sure if you've ever had to pay to send out a mailer. These were sent out to every single household. It wasn't sent out to a targeted mail list. Anyone that's ran a campaign understands, when you're sending it out to a targeted mail list, it's much cheaper than sending it out to an entire district, where you have to send out to close to 40,000 homes. When you're targeting the mailers that these gentlemen sent out, they sent out three mailers. I received close to six mailers, three of which being from Dearborn Public Schools. So you were able to afford to send out mailers, with all due respect. And the schools were able to send out, at least, were able to afford to send out just at least one mailer, just to let the citizens know that this task force was being created two years ago. It wasn't on us to inform, just like Mr. Berry said earlier. I mean, you have 600 students at Hague Elementary School. I'd love to see how many parents show up to those school board meetings. I mean, to, I'm sorry, parent teacher conferences. I mean, that's just about it. But the money was there. If you didn't want to send out a mailer to inform the citizens about this task force, the money was there, just like it was there when you wanted to send out a mailer to inform them that this was not a tax increase. You're welcome. Have a great day.
The final blue card is Adip Mosip wishing to speak about the bond.
Good evening. In the age of misinformation and fake news, it came to Dearborn now. And this vote, I campaigned for yes vote. I support the schools because I believe that we need to support our schools because of the underlying fundamental problem with the state funding, that we get at least a thousand less where we're supposed to educate as students that's without taking considerations, ELL, or any other support needed. And I think many people in the city shared, even the people that voted no, shared that we need to support our schools. I was saddened to see how residents and people living in the city respond to city, to school officials in terms of not believing things and base value. And that's something that I think the district and the board need to work on in repairing that trust. And I hope, and the new process, and I look forward to a new process that will gain the trust of other people in the district, those who voted yes or voted no, to have a future for the plan, a plan for the future. And a plan that need to be developed inclusively through and include all the active members of our Dearborn community. But we need a bold plan to address all these issues. And even if we have to go to voters and ask for a tax increase, we have to be ready to fight for it. We can't, as a board, you can't, yes, pass and vote to pass things and then let it fail without going and campaigning, just like you campaigned for your seat. I wish I saw people on this board campaign for this bond, just like they campaigned for this seat, if they pass, if they vote for it. Otherwise, I hope to look forward for healthy discussion on this board. When things come out, to disagree respectfully, and vote no, and come up with another plan before you pass it to the voters. So be honest with each other before you come and be honest with us. This is a responsibility for all of us, our schools. We can't let our schools in the hands of special groups, of a handful of people that were not elected, were not appointed, and just showing up in a month and say, "This is where we are. We are the parents of Dearborn." No, you guys represent the Dearborn residents. They elected you, and you have the responsibility now to come up with plans. And we, in the city, everyone who's active in the education field is ready to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosip.
President Pechikov?
Yes, Trustee Lane.
We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday.
Yes.
And I know that the agenda was going to be board self-evaluation. Mr. Wall has brought forward a number of different options and documents. Are we going to add the discussion of a committee, like...
We can.
A cuts committee, or to either talk about facilities, cuts, all of the whole package?
We can look at how...
Whether we're going to form a committee, because I think we do need to get to this...
Yeah, if, let's, the self-evaluation part will probably go fairly quickly, and then we will be discussing our bylaws that apply to us, and some of the changes that were suggested by M A S B at our February study session. But we can probably fit in that as well. And just remind me if I forget to change the topic when it comes time to move on on that agenda on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.